Call this meeting of the Norco City Council to order. The clerk will please take the roll.
Councilmember Newton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hanna?
Mayor.
Mayor Gronmire?
Yes.
All present?
The City Council will now recess to close session, Section 54954, to consider the following matters as listed on the agenda. I'd like to reconvene this session of the Norco City Council, and we will have a report of actions taken in closed session.
Yes, the City Council discussed the matters listed on the agenda in closed session, and there are no reportable actions.
Right, thank you. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance with Councilmember Ted Hoffman.
I may recite, pledge your nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll please remain standing for our invocation, Pastor Aaron Diaz from the New Beginnings Community Church.
Hi, thank you for having me, and on behalf of me and my family, we love Norco. So, thank you for letting us live here. But if you would all join me in prayer, thank you, God. Thank you for this wonderful country that we live in, Lord. God, and I want to thank you for the city of Norco, Lord God, and all those that are working to make Norco a wonderful place to live and do business, Father. And I ask for wisdom for our local government here, Father. Lord, for every single person that's behind the scenes that helps to make decisions and to keep this place moving forward, Father. God, I thank you for the businesses and the households that are represented in Norco. We pray for prosperity for our city. We ask, Lord Jesus, for covering and safety in this place, Lord, that each person would feel safe and they would feel a part of the city of Norco, Father. So, God, I, once again, I just thank you, and I ask for your covering over every decision, over everything, Lord God, that's on the table here before us, God. Or that you would bring the wisdom, you would bring the finances, Father God, and the right people, Lord Jesus, for the city of Norco. We thank you, and we give you all the glory and honor. In your name we pray, amen. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll have a presentation, so I'd like to call Terry of EcoCrawl to the podium, please.
We wanted to come tonight. I don't know if any of you were able to, I know some of you joined us up there, some of us gotten some of the Jeeps we had up there. But we wanted to come and thank you guys for allowing us to use the facility in January. This concept came about six-so months ago, four months ago, we weren't even a company. We built a company, we got a bunch of people together, and we hosted our first event up at your facility. And by all accounts, we think it was a huge success. We didn't draw the crowds, but that was kind of expected because we had no advertising, we had nothing to really build the campaign on. So, kind of what we did in January was, we invited a bunch of vendors, we had about 35 vendors with us, we invited clubs to come out, just kind of have fun, bring your families, and kind of experience what we're looking to do on a bi-monthly basis in somebody's city. So, that's kind of what we did. And it was a learning curve, lot of things we learned, but we're coming back in March. And the reason that we did January, the way we did it, was to kind of set up for March. We figured we'd learn from our mistakes and listen to the feedback, and then we'd come back bigger and better. So, since we had the event, now we own our own content, we have a lot of great feedback, and I think March is going to be kind of crazy, in a good way. What we're getting through social media, what we're getting through vendors coming, saying we need to be part of this, we're going to pack the house in March without problem. Our company and our event is all about kind of trying to bring family together. I'm a resident now of Norco, I was in Chino Hills for years, I moved to Norco. But, you know, it kind of goes hand in hand with the community here. I mean, we have horsepower, not horses, but it's kind of all the same, we treat the land the same, we treat our family and friends the same, we invite everybody. So, if you guys did come, you kind of saw a taste of that. We had the whole kids' playland, where kids were playing with Tonka trucks and panning for gold, and riding mini-electric Jeeps, and gas-powered mini-Jeeps, then, of course, we had the big boys climbing through the obstacles in the big arenas and stuff. So, it was a lot of fun, and we just wanted to come and thank you. I wanted to kind of acknowledge Patty Ireland, who's like on speed dial now, we talk at least five times a day. She helped us tremendously. Ted, of course, you know, I know he just likes to play around on the equipment up there, but he still was a huge help to us. Her staff is phenomenal, I know you guys know them all, but, you know, Jesse, and Richard, and Santa Claus, I mean Keith, you know, they, no matter what we needed, they just helped us. And they were part of our event, they've kind of become part of our family, I wish I could take them to every show that we do. But, you know, again, we just want to thank you, and then, we have a couple of things. So, I have with me one of our vendors, this young gentleman named Nate, he's Union Stripes, and he handmakes these flags that are just phenomenal, and he has them for all different kinds of groups, and service groups, and you name it, and he can make it. And so, what I had him do for our company is to make this for you guys, so we can present it to you, and it's got your logo on the flag as well. So, hopefully, you can find an office, or a wall, or something to hang this on. So, this is what it looks like. Pretty cool. If you may. We want to give that to you. And then also, we do, in every city we go to, all of our raffles and everything we do is give back. We, as a company, will never keep any of it. So, we decided that we would do, 50% of the 50-50 raffle would go to the city we were being hosted in, and the other 50% goes to land preservation. So, we didn't bring the crowds, so we didn't bring the, I wanted a big fat check, this big, but we do have a check for $382 that you guys can use for whatever you want, and we'll want to do 10 times, hopefully, in March, and I'm sure we will. But, again, you know, it was great for us, it was a great learning facility, because they were so accommodating through the whole process. Our feedback has been off the chain, my phone hasn't stopped ringing in two weeks. I was in four cities in the last five days, because they've invited us to come to their city and see about putting the event on in their city. I've got people out of state asking me if we'd be willing to travel and put our show on, so for a company that didn't exist four months ago, I think we did pretty good. But we just came tonight to thank everybody. Hopefully, you guys all come in March and see the show. We'll have rides for anybody that wants to jump in these Jeeps and go through obstacles and join us. So, again, we just want to thank you, acknowledge Patty, and everybody that helped us along the way, and we'll be back 23rd and 24th of March, and we're going to do it bigger and better in March. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you, it was a great event. Any of you that didn't make it up there, please put the 23rd and 24th on your calendar. It's really a family event, and there's something for everyone, so you definitely don't want to miss out on that. Welcome to Norco, and thank you for being here, we really appreciate it. At this time, we are going to do a couple of recognitions, so we are going to start with Lieutenant Brittick, so if he will join the council down at the podium, please.
All right, so as many of you know, Lieutenant Brittick is getting a different job assignment as he eases into retirement, so it's our pleasure to recognize you this evening. Lieutenant Brittick was appointed to the Riverside County Dedicated Lieutenant for the city of Norco back in June of 2014. The lieutenant who has been with the department since 1990 is a longtime Norco resident, and therefore has a personal stake in our community. After completing the academy, then Deputy Brittick was assigned to the former Riverside Station, where he patrolled unincorporated areas of Riverside County. And in 1993, the deputy was reassigned to the contract city of Norco, where he handled patrol and traffic enforcement, as well as field training officer duties. He also served on Norco's community-oriented policing and problem-solving teams. In 2001, Deputy Brittick was promoted to investigator at the Harupa Valley Station, where he investigated a wide range of crimes against persons and property. In 2002, he was promoted again, earning the rank of sergeant, and transferred to the Southwest Detention Center. In 2006, Sergeant Brittick was selected to join the sheriff's team, responsible for the design, construction, and implementation of the county's new public safety radio system, referred to as Public Safety Enterprise Communication. In 2009, Sergeant Brittick was transferred to the City of Moreno Valley Police Department, where he worked a number of different assignments, including patrol, watch commander, the problem-oriented policing team, and administration. In 2012, he ascended to the rank of lieutenant and was transferred back to the Public Safety Enterprise Communication Project, overseeing the successful completion and implementation of the project that he had helped to design. In the position that he just finished, Lieutenant Brittick oversees the operations of the Norco Sheriff's Office, which is a satellite office of the Harupa Valley Station. The 14 deputies assigned to the Norco Sheriff's Office, as well as additional staff and volunteers, are part of the larger operation of the Harupa Valley Station, allowing the Norco Sheriff's Office to draw upon the considerable resources of the Riverside Sheriff's Department. So, we've appreciated your time and work on behalf of our community, and at this time, I'll let the other council members say a few words.
You're Protem, I'm not Bash. Lieutenant, I want to thank you for your time here, it's been very pleasant working with you, you've always been very cooperative, we had anything, and you've let us all know when there was a problem going on, and you got it, you and your guys got it handled, and we appreciate it. And besides being a top officer, I think you're a good gentleman on top of that, sir, so thank you much.
I first met Eric with the Sheriff's Department, we were assigned to the Southwest Detention Center, came in as a brand-new sergeant, and I go, "Yeah, it's tough, you just got to make a decision, but there's three of us other sergeants there with you, so if you do it wrong, well, we're all going fishing, so it doesn't make any difference." So, but it is, it's been a privilege and an honor to have Eric here in the city as our lieutenant over the last couple of years. A long list of people pulled before you, and you've matched and exceeded them, sorry, Dan, but he has, he beat you, okay. So, but it is, it's a good thing about it, I'll tell you, the first thing is, at the Southwest Detention Center, where our locker rooms, I go in there, and I see this thing with a rule bumper sticker on there, and, "Oh, that's Brittick," so, yeah, I figure he's all right, so. But Eric, thank you very much for all the work you've done, you guys are showing how much they love you, and they give another responsibility, so that's one of the reasons why we always have a Deputy of the Year come out of here, thank you.
Hey, buddy, what can I say? I appreciate everything that you've done for all of us and our community, you're one of us. And I think what I'm going to take away is that, a few months ago, that I noticed we were at Saddle sore, and I saw a photograph of you and the mayor's husband, and for now, I'm going to keep that on the QT, but at the right time, I will publish it, so. Eric?
Thank you. You know, for me, it's like losing part of the family, you know, Norco High graduate, Norco High graduate, and I hope we're going to see a lot of you around, I mean, I've gotten to know your wife and your kid, and I'm going to really miss you, and you have big shoes to fill, which I have a hunch you're going to be able to do it, because if he could top him, then there's, we're just going to keep going up. So, thanks, Eric, for everything.
Thank you.
So, on behalf of the city of Norco, we do so appreciate your service, and thank you for everything you've done for Norco, would you like to say a few words?
Of course.
Thank you.
So, first, I want to thank the great citizens of Norco, you have a very high standard for law enforcement, you have a very high quality of life here, and we work very, very hard. But as we transition, I want you to know that the new chief of police is outstanding, I've known him for a number of years, and he's going to do a fine job, and as a citizen, I feel very confident in our Norco Sheriff's Office. I want to thank all the city council, the mayor, for the tremendous support, each of the city department heads that I've sat here with, and we've worked through a number of challenges and issues, I am so grateful for your support. And lastly, this proclamation tonight really isn't about me, and it isn't about anyone that sat in this seat previously, or that's going to sit in it tomorrow, it's about the deputies and the success, if you think the sheriff's office is successful out here, and I tell you it is, it's because of the deputies. So, when you're at home, asleep at night, remember that there's a deputy out there patrolling. When you are celebrating your anniversaries, your birthdays, with your families, deputies are missing theirs to patrol, and they do that by choice. So, I just ask you to continue to support the deputies that are out there at all times of the night and day, making sure our community is safe. Thank you all, it's been a great ride, thank you.
Captain? Wow. Captain Hedge, you're next up. For old times' sake. Welcome, how are you? Good. So, Captain Hedge is a 21-year veteran of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, has over 30 years of law enforcement experience. He began his career with the Paris Police Department in 1987 as a patrol officer, and later as a corporal. In 1996, the Paris Police Department began contracting for services with the Riverside County Sheriff's Office, where Captain Hedge continued his law enforcement career. And over the next several years, Captain Hedge worked at the Harupa Valley Station in a variety of assignments, including patrol, field training officer, and in the Norco community-oriented policing team. He also oversaw the Norco Citizens Patrol Unit during that time. In 2001, Captain Hedge was promoted to investigator and assigned to the Robert Presley Detention Center, and in February of 2003, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant and transferred to the Moreno Valley Station. As a sergeant, he was assigned to patrol operations, and later supervised the Moreno Valley Resource Officer Unit, as well as serving as the administrative sergeant for the station. Captain Hedge was promoted to the rank of lieutenant in 2010, and assigned to patrol and administrative assignments at the Paris Station. He was later assigned to the Harupa Valley Station as the dedicated lieutenant of the wonderful city of Norco. And in 2014, Captain Hedge was transferred to the Personnel Bureau, where he oversaw the recruiting and hiring for the department. The Harupa Valley Station provides police services to the unincorporated county communities of High Grove, Lake Hills, Home Gardens, El Cerrito, Coronita, Prado Basin, and the Cleveland National Forest in Riverside County. The station also provides police services under the contract to the cities of Eastvale, Harupa Valley, Norco. And Captain Hedge has served as the police chief for all three cities. So, Captain Hedge will be moving and at the Robert Presley Detention Center, so we want to thank you for your time here, Captain, and your watchful eye over the city of Norco and all that you've done for us. So, with that, I will let my fellow council members say a few words.
Captain, I'm not going to be like Ted, I'm going to say you've done a good job both times you've been around here. Appreciate working with you when you was lieutenant over here, and you made a lot of changes for the positive, and then when you come back as captain, well, things got better again, so appreciate everything you've done, and don't be a stranger coming around to see us here.
It's fun to hear the history, because I worked the Paris Station too, right after you left. And from the Paris Station to here, what a difference. But Dan has been, done a lot of good things here in the city when he was lieutenant. He also, for those of you that know, he made sure, when he was a captain over at Harupa, made sure that we had the best people coming over here, assigned here, because he worked here, he knew this, he knows the area, he knows the people. So, for that, you never forget what's going on, and you always took care of us, Dan. And I appreciate everything you do, and his new challenge at the jail, I know you got a lot, it's where most deputies start, so you've got a lot of training, a lot of things to do, and they got the right man on the job for it, so appreciate it, Dan, thank you.
What are you smiling for? You're just afraid, right? Captain Dan. Just how much I appreciate when you were our chief, and that what you've done for us as the head of the Harupa Station, you've always had our support. And the one thing I took away from you was that, how much you enjoyed being a cop, and I'm going to miss you.
I read on Facebook that they finally caught you, and they're putting you in the slammer. You know what I loved about you the most, and I have to, you and Eric are tied together in my mind, and I always felt like Norco had the best deputies in the entire department, but what I loved about you the most is how you treated the Citizens Patrol, and I have to include Eric in that too. You clearly cared for those people. I mean, the hours, and, I mean, even when you weren't directly involved, you came to their events, you saw them, and I really, I really appreciate that, and we're going to miss you, I mean, it's, but I really, I'm impressed with this guy too, so I think we're in good shape. Him I don't know yet, I gotta wait to hear him talk. Thanks for everything.
Captain, would you like to say a few words?
First of all, I'd just like to thank everybody at the community and city council staff. I'm very humbled to be standing here in front of you, after all these years. I started here over 20 years ago as a deputy sheriff, patrolling the area, came back as lieutenant, and then came back as a commander of the Harupa Valley Station, so I'm honored, I've always been honored to be out here. I've never kept it a secret, and I think it's well-known that I love this community, I've been saying that for many, many years, and I still love this community. Like Eric said, we can only do so much, it's the good staff, and the good deputies, and the good lieutenants that really make it what it is for law enforcement. I think there was kind of like a pattern during the last presentation about one person being better than the other, and that's always been a goal of the Sheriff's Department, is to bring people in as a replacement that's either equal to or better, and I think we've really fulfilled that here in this community with the deputies, with Lieutenant Eric has done an outstanding job, and I want to personally thank you, Eric, you've done very well for the community and for the department. And I'm sure that the lieutenant, we've worked together before, myself and Andy, he's going to do an excellent job. And the new captain, my replacement, I think that, like I said, equal or better, I think better. I know Kevin put in a request for taller, taller. There you go, see, that's what I mean, there's a pattern here.
He did the same to me.
Yeah, yes. However, you know, out of 30-plus years in law enforcement, I've only been to the jail, working in the jails once, that was for a year and a half as a detective, but I can tell you the benefit I was discussing earlier, is that it's freezing outside, I'll tell you, it's like 70 degrees 24/7 in the jail, so I'm getting soft, even though it's been a couple of weeks. But, again, I just want to thank everybody, again, it's a wonderful community, and it's been an honor to serve you, thank you.
Someone come over here. if you would like to do the honors, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. It's my honor and privilege to introduce our new area commander for the Harupa Valley Station, Captain John Warren. I've known John, John brings tremendous experience, leadership, and integrity to the department, so we're very excited to have him. So, without further ado, Captain John Warren.
Thank you very much, Andy, thank you, Council, for letting me be here. Listening to Eric and Dan talk, it's truly an honor to be here amongst you. I've always heard about the Norco Station, I've always heard about the reputation of family, I've always heard about how well the deputies do out here. I had the privilege of promoting within, I was at the Harupa Valley Station in charge of investigations and special enforcement for the last year, and what I was very impressed with during that last year, and I don't know if Eric knows this, is he always spoke about the deputies. Everything was always about the deputies. Whenever we had a good investigation over here, he always made sure in our staff meetings that the deputies were recognized, and he never took credit for anything, and I want to thank you for that, Eric, you've done an outstanding job here. Captain Hedge, I have big shoes to fill. Obviously, you've been here for many, many years, and you've always talked in our staff meetings how much you love this city, and I want you guys to know that this is the Sheriff Department's first contract, and it's the most important contract. So, nothing's going to change from our perspective. In fact, talking to the sheriff, he would like our department to mirror what happens in Norco, as far as the team atmosphere, the willingness to work together, and the fact that we get the job done with the best deputies we can. So, I'd like to keep that promise to you, that we're going to keep doing that, and again, I'm very, very humbled to be here amongst you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Captain, and welcome to Norco. Councilman Bash says next time he'd like you to have a cowboy hat. Okay, at this time, we're going to go ahead and proceed into city council business items, with city council communications and reports on regional boards and commissions, so we will start with Councilman Hanna.
Well, we're putting them all on these little powerpoints, the key things, if you'll notice there, the ridership on the bus to Disneyland and other parts of Orange County has increased to about 600 and something riders a day, and a round trip ferry is about $3. So, you can't beat that, and city of Riverside employees and college students, well, at the House of Pass, they ride for free. And during the holidays, with the 25-cent ride for the students from kindergarten to grade 12, there was 19,000 students rode those. And again, I'm very, very humbled to be here amongst you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Captain, and welcome to Norco. Councilman Bash says next time he'd like you to have a cowboy hat. Okay, at this time, we're going to go ahead and proceed into city council business items with city council communications and reports on regional boards and commissions. So we will start with Councilman Hannah.
Well, we're putting them all on these little powerpoints. The key things, if you'll notice there, the ridership on the bus to Disneyland and other parts of Orange County has increased to about 600 and something riders a day. And a round trip ferry is about $3. So you can't beat that. And City of Riverside employees and college students at the House of Pass, they ride for free. And during the holidays, with the 25 cent ride for the students from kindergarten to grade 12, there was 19,000 students rode those buses those days. So that's been a big success also. Yeah, the next one, the RCTC. I just got back from a workshop down at Temecula. It's our annual workshop. And one thing we voted on there was to approve the flyover from the eastbound 91 toll lanes to the northbound 15 toll lanes. They didn't engineer them when they first put the freeway in. They didn't engineer either side, northbound or the southbound side that you get on the freeway with. But we've gone back and found the funding to get those. And the I-15 express lane project's moving right along. And there's one little short video on here. You see these every week when it comes out on the website about the I-15 progress. So, right, can you get that one in there?
The Riverside County Transportation Commission presents the fifth edition of its video series, 15 Facts on the 15 Express Lanes. This edition focuses on innovative bridge building. The construction of the 15 express lanes requires the widening of 11 bridges between Cahalko Road and Route 60. The Santa Ana River Bridge, at more than 1,800 feet in length, is the largest bridge to be widened. To minimize effects to the Santa Ana River, crews will perform most of the work from the top of the existing bridge, reducing the need to build support structures beneath the bridge. This is where innovation begins. Crews will use enormous precast girders to widen the Santa Ana River Bridge. Precast girders are also being used to widen the other 10 bridges. Each girder is 170 feet long and weigh more than 110 tons. The girders will be moved into place at night using CHB escorts. When the girders arrive, giant gantry cranes will carry the girders along the 1,800-foot bridge span and lay them exactly in place for construction crews to secure. This innovation provides benefits by reducing effects on the Santa Ana River, shortening construction time by not having to build support structures beneath the bridge, using cranes to eliminate the need for lane closures on the bridge, reducing traffic congestion, motorist delays, and street closures, decreasing construction costs. Over the coming months, crews will assemble the first of two gantry cranes near the Santa Ana River Bridge and will deliver the precast girders this spring. Please watch for updates and images of this innovative work. Want to stay connected? Sign up on our website or text for weekly construction updates.
One more addition. When they complete this section of the 15 from 60 to Cahalko Road, then they're going to go from Cahalko to Highway 74 in Elsinore with the lanes. They'll eventually get all the way to San Diego County. But right now, when they finish this project, they'll go on down and work further south. So it should help with all the homes they're building down there and adding traffic. So thank you very much.
All right, Councilman Hoffman.
Yeah, I did a lot of meetings with residents and other people. But the main thing I want to talk about is the Riqua meeting that we had on the teleconference. And just to let you know, the Riqua, which we're a part of the JPA with Harupa Community Services Districts, Home Gardens, City Corona, and ourselves, that is where all our wastewater goes. And unfortunately of that, they were doing some work on it and figured out that we had to increase the amount of the purchase order for the oxidation ditch radiation because they found that the parts had worn out more quicker than they thought they were going to do. So if you cut some odor of it while it was still, you know, it was still, before it was repaired, hopefully this will take care of that. So that's all, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to let people know that we're working on trying to keep that thing working right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Councilman Bash.
So I attended the League of Cities Quarterly Statewide Conference as part of the Community Services Committee. I was a little disappointed. That's a committee that does parks, historic preservation, childcare issues, community services. And unfortunately, right now, everybody's so overwhelmed with the homelessness impact, the compelled housing, the governor's budget, the money he's taking away or sort of holding as a carrot. So there's a lot of unrest. There's also a lot of discussion about the League of Cities' position on the compelled housing. They seem to be for it. So there's a lot of kind of going back and forth right now within the committees. At the new police chief, which is a lot of fun. We have our Norco Film Festival coming up, March 2nd. That's going to be a lot of fun. I want to touch on the rural planning with Ted and I, we talked about last time, schools committee, life over alcohol, next one. Okay, that's just a lot of stuff about saving animals and 4,000, 400,000 protected acres per the plan, RCA, but the next one. What's really important about this is federal HR 530. And this is something that I think that our city needs to become involved in. You can read the other stuff there, there's quite a few things covered. But what happened is, is that as you may recall, we went to Sacramento and Berwin and I, and we helped to fight against losing the ability to control broadband towers. And they could just put them wherever they wanted. Well, we had the governor, he finally listened to us, he vetoed it, we won. Unfortunately, the powers that be decided just to go past that. And they decided that they would just put it into place and just kind of, we lost all of our control over that. Well, at a federal level, there is a HR 530 which will override that. And so I think one of the things we need to do as a city is we need to send a letter ASAP asking Congressman Calvert to support this bill to override the loss of that ability to control where we put these cell towers. That's really the most important thing I want to talk about. And then finally, I did meet with Supervisor Spiegel and she has asked that the City of Norco, you know, that's all stuff. She asked that the City of Norco give her something that will remind her of Norco in her office. And I don't know what that would be. I think we should maybe put our thinking caps on. I know we have that rug that's kind of cool, maybe a photograph of the memorial, I don't know. There's a, one of my favorites is that photograph we took of all the firemen the day of 9/11 and all the police officers. That would be a very cool thing in front of our fire station. But I think it needs to be a council decision or the mayor's decision and she would like us to present it to her and so she knows it's one of her cities. All right, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Newton.
I guess the biggest thing I have is the Chino Desalter Board meeting tomorrow afternoon. And just a slight update with the boring that we're doing underneath the river. That is progressing. And I'm going to say, within the next two weeks, what we may see is we're going to stage everything on, as we drill underneath the river and we come up to Old Hamner Road, we're going to stage all the pipe on Old Hamner. It will all be welded together. And then the machine is going to hook onto that pipe and all the piping will be on rollers. And we're going to pull it back down through the boring and back underneath the river. So I'll have more of a target date. I'll know a little bit more tomorrow if, I think that would be the more interesting thing to see is when this pipe gets pulled back through and underneath the river. I think the wall on this pipe is like five inches thick. It's some pretty heavy-duty stuff. Chad's been working with the CDA on this as far as making all the arrangements on accommodating all the residents that live on Old Hamner Road. And so I'll fill you in on that as I learn more tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. And then just from my report, you can see it there. Again, I'd like to thank the Sheriff's Department for allowing me to be a volunteer for the point-in-time count and learn the processes and the things that are involved with that. So, thank you, Deputy. It's always a pleasure. And the only other thing that I have is the unload meeting we had on Monday. We are going to have a town hall, so to speak. We haven't come up with a title or a name for it yet. For the youth in the community of Norco, it'll be held at Nellie Weaver Hall. We are going to have Mothers Against Drunk Driving have their display car there and they will be a speaker. And then we'll also have Opal Singleton come and speak to the youth as well. And the reason why we picked that time, it's right before prom and right before spring break. So it's an ideal time to remind the youth about making good choices as they have a little bit more free time. So we're really looking forward to having that event and having a product come out of the unload committee. So that concludes my report.
Real quick, I want to thank Eric for steering the unload committee to, from a point of not quite sure what we wanted to do, to forming to this event. And I really hand it to you for kind of guiding us. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes. So at this time, we will move to item number two on the agenda, city council consent items. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under item number three of the agenda. So with that, do any members of the council have items they wish to be pulled? So Kevin is going to pull E. Any other items to be pulled?
Move to approve the rest.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve all items of the consent calendar except for letter E. Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. So we will move on to item number three, which is items pulled from the city's consent calendar. And Councilman Bash.
Just really briefly, Brian, could you just talk a little bit about the party partner monies that came?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Counsel. The item on the agenda tonight is the acceptance of the Nancy Adrian Newman Trust Fund. Mrs. Newman's brother was a participant of the Party Partners Program for a number of years. As you know, as a part of our budget, shortfalls in the past, this program has been reduced and has been inactive for about a year. Mrs. Newman felt very passionate about this program and had identified that her trust would be, a large portion, actually 40% of her trust would be dedicated to the restoration of and restoring of the Party Partners Program. So tonight's action is actually a donation from the Nancy Newman Trust Fund. And basically, she has left the city $133,325.66 to continue the operations of the Party Partners Program. With the council's adoption of this, we will be planning to start that, restart that program in July.
Could we send a letter of thanks to the person that made this donation? Isn't there a friend that's associated that facilitated this?
There's actually two people. There's her daughter, who is the executor of the trust. And then there is Emily Stanton, who is her close friend, who is also noted in the trust. And is also, her brother was a participant in the Party Partners Program as well.
So could we send letters to those people and just sign them from council and thank them very much for this? It's really cool that this was solved. And thanks staff for following through on all this and Michelle and everybody involved. That's all we have with this, were you going to say something? I'm sorry, Brian. With this motion to approve.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve item E. Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. So we will move on to agenda item number four, public comments. This is the time when persons in the audience wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room and present it to the city clerk so that you may be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the city council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The city council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. Bonnie Slager.
Good evening. Two things. First of all, I wanted to invite everybody to the next town hall meeting, which is Monday, February 25th. So I hope everybody in the audience will attend. And the second thing is Norco Horsemans is going to have their annual casino night on March 9th. And the purpose of this fundraiser is for money to provide scholarships to some of our high school students that are in the FFA program. And we typically are able to give scholarships to five students to help them further their education after high school. So I hope everybody will attend, sponsor, whatever. I do have tickets tonight. Pre-sale tickets are $20 each at the door, they're 25. So get your tickets now. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Mayor, that concludes public comments. Okay, so we will proceed to item number five on the agenda, which is legislative matters. No new evidence will be heard from the public as the public hearing has been closed regarding the items listed on the agenda. So item A is ordinance number 1,046, second reading, an ordinance of the City of Norco, yeah, of the City Council of the City of Norco approving zone change 2018-04. Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 1,046. Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to item 5B, ordinance number 1,047, second reading, an ordinance of the City of Norco approving specific Plan 85-1, Amendment 11, to amend the Norco Autumnal Specific Plan along with any related references. Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 1,047. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next item, number six, discussion and action items. Letter A is an appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission to fill one unscheduled vacancy. And we will have Cheryl report.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. So again, this is an appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission to fill one unscheduled vacancy. The general requirements to serve on a city commission are noted in Chapter 2.22 of the Norco Municipal Code. And that includes, or members must be a citizen of the United States, a resident of the city, at least 18 years of age, must take the oath of office, and have no felony convictions. Specific to the Historic Preservation Commission, residents, excuse me, members must have knowledge to be able to analyze and interpret architectural and site planning information. Also through educational and professional experience, have knowledge in urban planning, architectural history, historic preservation, and more, as well as general knowledge of architectural styles in Norco. So again, this is as a result of a letter of resignation received by Patricia received by Patricia Overstreet on December 10th of last year. And so, following that, the city clerk's office released a public notice on January 3rd of this year. And that release was made through the city's newsroom, specifically top stories, also through social media posts, and the city's website. The recruitment ended on January 28th. And during that period, the city clerk's office received three applications. And those names are noted there, David Rubenstein, Michael DeRosa, and Gary Bowen. All three applicants are in the audience and ready to speak on their qualifications. So, unless you have any questions, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to call them up to speak.
Does council have any questions? All right, we're ready to hear from the applicants, then.
David Rubenstein.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is David Rubenstein. I'm a classical concert pianist with five decades of experience in the concert and music recording world. I'm also an amateur painter. I've been a member of rural with my wife Elizabeth for about a year. We moved to Norco about two years ago. We were attracted to Norco because of its equestrian atmosphere, which was kind of similar to the atmosphere in our previous neighborhood of Shadow Hills, California. I'm here today at the suggestion of my friend Larry Ekoff, as well as Pat Overstreet and Jeff Kayen, who I have met at various rural events, along with Kevin Bash. They have also heard my musical performances. I believe in the preservation of old and beautiful things. This is reflected in my approach to artistic matters. Many of you are familiar with Beethoven's so-called Moonlight Sonata. As a teenager, I heard this piece frequently, but I didn't feel that I could bring anything interesting or new to the interpretation until very recently. I discovered that by paying close attention to the original edition, audiences could perhaps hear it closer to the way Beethoven intended it. So, I decided to follow Beethoven's markings in the score. So far, I haven't heard any grumbling. This is similar to dusting off an old painting. Preserve the painting, not the dust. So, I hope that I'll be able to apply my philosophy to preservation in Norco. Thanks for listening to my presentation, and thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Michael DeRosa.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilman. As you will be appointing a new member to the Norco Historic Preservation Commission, it is my hope that you will judge the applications with careful attention to which applicant has the most qualified background to assume the responsibilities that are needed for this position. I am confident that my professional career working with U.S. history, American government, and participating in local government in the city that I worked in for over thirty years should prove that I would be suitable in an asset on this commission. Moreover, my doctoral program was focused on urban leadership, particularly improving communities. Another organization that I've participated in was the Inland Communities Organizing Network, which focused on working with faith and labor organizations and municipalities in Riverside and San Bernardino counties to assist communities in finding solutions to various challenges. Since my family moved to Norco, we have demonstrated a commitment to working to make this a better community. Now, I would like to further my commitment to better support Norco and our local government by serving on the Historic Preservation Commission. I truly appreciate the years that I've lived in Norco and the relationships that our family has developed with our city leaders. And it is my hope that I can contribute further to keeping Norco a unique and interesting place to live by preserving those places that our community values and wants to protect. Thank you for all your years of dedicated service. And please accept my appreciation for your consideration of my application. Good evening.
Thank you.
Gary Bowen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Gary Bowen. Looking for your support and consideration for the appointment to the Historical Preservation Committee. Wife and I moved here three and a half years ago. In that time, one of the first groups we joined was the Lake Norconian Club Foundation. And it's gotten me really interested in the history and the background of Norco. Along with that, we belong to numerous other volunteer organizations. And we just have the time and like to provide the effort to help out the city with my, with the time. But thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes the comments. I do have voting ballots here whenever the council is ready to proceed.
All right. Does council have any questions or comments at this time?
I have a comment.
Sure.
So, for me, I will say this. I think I got passed over twice for the Parks and Rec Commission. And then they finally let me, and I was there ten years. Please keep trying. This is, we have three very, very strong applicants. And I do know that there's two positions coming up on this commission in just a few months. And I know one person is retiring and moving out of the city. And I think the other person is also going to be, I have a hunch there's going to be two more positions after this. So, thank you for the appointment. Keep trying if you don't get selected tonight. That's really what I'm trying to say. We need people exactly like the three people who stood at that podium. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other comments from council? All right, we will proceed with the vote.
Okay, the results of the voting. Councilmember Hannah voted for Gary Bowen. Councilmember Hoffman voted for David Rubenstein. And we have a majority vote. The other remaining three councilmembers voting for Michael DeRosa. So, we have three votes for him, making him the appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. Congratulations, Mr. DeRosa.
All right, thank you. And thank you again to all the applicants. And we look forward to hopefully having you apply to commissions again soon. So, with that, we are going to move on to agenda item 6B, which is, I can't find my paper, our new rules and procedures. So, a resolution approving amendments to the rules of procedure for city council meetings. And again, our city clerk will report on that for us.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. So, yes, this is the rules and procedures for city council meetings. Having these rules for city council members has several benefits. First, it allows for meetings to be run in an efficient and consistent manner. Second, it allows for the council and residents to debate matters of public concern in a courteous and respectful manner. Third, rules provide guidance to council members on how they are to interact and engage with city employees and members of the public. Fourth, rules of procedure assist new elected officials and appointed commissioners understanding the guidelines for city council meetings and other advisory body meetings. So, I wanted to point out that there is a difference between the rule, the resolution before you and other city resolutions. The Norco City Council norms and procedures, which was most recently updated in 2008, focuses on operating vision and establishing priorities, city council interaction with staff, and election season norms. The Code of Ethics for city council members, commission members, and city employees resolution, which was revised in 2013, addresses ethical considerations, responsibility, equity, and high standards. So, I just wanted to point that out. And those are currently under review for possible revisions as well. So, this resolution tonight has thirteen main topics within it. And we have some additions to this resolution with some minor clerical changes and then some substantial additions. And so, I'm only going to address the larger additions to this resolution. So, first, we'll start with the purpose, which is on the first page of the proposed resolution. And it's under Section 2 of the resolution. And on the left is what's currently in the resolution. And on the right is the proposed changes. The items, or the text in red, strikeout, is what's proposed to be deleted. The text in blue is what's being proposed to be added to the resolution. So, this resolution, again, applies to city council meetings. It's been implied that it applies to city commissions, committees, boards, and advisory councils. But the text in blue there just puts it in there in writing that it does apply to those bodies as well. And then again, the reason for this resolution is to promote transparencies and citizen participation. It's not only good for the city council to understand the guidelines and have something to follow, but it's also a benefit for the public as well. And then continuing on, on the resolution, page two, under city council meetings, item E, again, on the left is what's currently on there. What's being proposed is just clarification. And that's mostly what this resolution is doing, are the proposed changes. So, every city council meeting agenda is noticed. For regular meetings, the notice, notification is a minimum seventy-two hours. And for special meeting, it's minimum twenty-four hours. And as you know, the notification is done well in advance of that. Specifically for regular meeting agendas, we sometimes post five to six days prior to the meeting. So, that's well above and beyond the seventy-two hour requirement. The items that are, excuse me, the posting locations have been added. And that is set by city resolution, so that can change. But those are the five locations in addition to the city website where meeting notices can be found for the public. Continuing on to order of business. And I believe that's on page five of the resolution. There's no clear or really any text at all in the current resolution about closed session. And so, we've added item C on the right there in blue. And again, it just talks about the public's right to speak on any closed session items prior to the city council recessing into closed session. And just as they can with any item on the agenda.
Madam Mayor, just, I've got the order of business on the closed session. That's on, you skip over page four? Because you deleted, I'm looking at the deletion of number one, agenda.
Are you looking at the red line?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, because that was, that's clarified elsewhere in the resolution.
Okay, I was just, I was just, that's why, if it's clarified later on, I just wondered why. That's all.
There were, there were a number of situations in the ordinance that, or the resolution, that were either redundant or covered in another way. So...
Yeah, public comments is addressed elsewhere in the resolution, but this specifically doesn't apply. Because this, you're referencing that the city council's intention to receive public comments by 9:00 P.M. Is that the one you're speaking of?
Yes. And because that was, I remember when they put that in there for a certain reason. That's why.
Yeah, at one point in time, public comments was later in the agenda. And we've recently moved it up higher, first on the agenda, to allow for public comments earlier in the evening.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
So, again, going back to closed session, let's see what are the other items here. Just again, the council had, or excuse me, the public has the ability to speak on items on the agenda relating to closed session matters. And I don't know if the city attorney wants to add anything related to closed session.
No, other than this, the section's essentially statutory. It's what we do now, but it's just not reflected in the procedure.
Okay, then next on the resolution, I'm just going off of the clean copy. So, I apologize if you're going off of the red line copy. But on page seven of the resolution, we've added a substantial amount of information there or text regarding public hearing, the public hearing process. And there wasn't any information in the current resolution on that. So, again, it's just procedural. It gives direction to council and staff on how public hearings are managed in a meeting, including staff reports, written materials, questions of staff. So, unless there's any questions on that, that's just essentially what we're doing now. But it's been put in writing. Also, on the hearing process, and the rights of the presiding officer, the mayor, on how to manage public hearing testimony. Again, speaker time, which is, follows along with the three-minute limit there. In addition is item D, where the applicant or the appellant is limited to ten minutes. And those are the highlights of those sections.
Mayor, just, since this is a writing, are these concrete times now? Or does the presiding officer have the ability to be flexible on some of these?
Well, the council, this is a resolution. The council always has the ability, a majority of the council, to give more time to the app, appellant, or to give more time to a member of the public. As, currently, currently, this doesn't provide for the mayor in and of themselves to make that decision. But the council can vary from these by majority.
Yeah, on the agenda item. And so, just on, and I'm reading that because when you talk about procedures, are these are procedures that are going to be somewhere posted outside when we do this? And the reason I'm asking is, like your number on B, 2B, 5, speakers will be discouraged... And the reason I'm asking is, like your number, on B, 2B, 5, speakers will be discouraged from reading a submission that is already contained in the agenda material. And I know some of it, they keep getting repetitive on it, but I just want, so that the speakers know, these are guidelines, or these absolutes. I don't want to discourage people from talking, that's what I'm getting at.
None of these are absolutes, but, and I suppose it's not something we discussed, but that at least as to the hearing process, I guess that you could have hearing procedures anybody that wants to pick one up and do it, same time you pick up an agenda.
Sure, we can have that posted.
Or at least read before hearing matters, so that they're clear on it. I just don't want people to get things, that we're shutting them off, and without being, or being offended, that's my point.
Yeah, and I suppose that, kind of like the Planning Commission does, that you could add to the Agenda 1 through 5 as a part of every Agenda, in the portion of the Agenda which explains public hearings.
It's currently what the mayor reads before each public hearing item?
So we, although, yeah, although you'd add the language that is different than what is currently read.
Again, this is just additional comments or text related to public hearings and council deliberations. This addresses council action, options to continue a public hearing, and then the actions on whether voting on an item or offering amendments. And also, Item C, findings. Generally speaking, council members should comment on their findings or their support of their actions. Item G, I think I'll let the city attorney speak on this, and this is outside meetings or extra meetings prior to public hearings.
Yeah, I mean, without going through the language, I mean, it's kind of the speech that I've given many, many times, that council members should avoid when you have a matter which is scheduled for public hearing before you. The purpose of the public hearing is to take testimony at the hearing and make decision based upon the information that you receive in that public hearing. And to that extent, it's discouraged, essentially soliciting additional information or being, having additional information provided you by applicants that isn't in the public hearing, to the extent that you receive it or you meet with a developer, for example, at a site, that those are things which should be disclosed prior to the beginning of the public hearing. That's a matter of transparency and a matter of due process.
John?
Yep.
Is there any, is there an ethical code violation or a statutory requirement that says we can't do that?
That you can't meet with?
Yeah.
No, no. No, in fact.
And I come back to, quite often, during a project, one or two of us will be contacted, even by staff, to say, hey, we want to meet and discuss an item that, this being, a project that's being developed.
Yep, and you will, well, there's a difference between discussing a project that will be developed and one that's scheduled for a public hearing before you. That means, generally speaking, it's gone through a public hearing at the Planning Commission. The project's either been approved or not approved, and is here either on appeal, or because that's the natural course of things. And it's the receiving of input that is outside the scheduled public hearing that's the problem. It's not the kinds of circumstances that you'd normally talk about, a developer has a piece of property and wants to feel out council members about what kinds of things should go on there, or he has a project, and how would you kind of feel about a project like this? That's different than when the matters, the application's been submitted, the project's been conditioned, it's gone through the Planning Commission, and now it's scheduled for a public hearing before you.
Okay, again, I'm going to.
And is there anything that's illegal about it? No. And what I'm suggesting is if that happens, that you disclose it. There are, there's a LA Planning Commission case that involved a developer, or excuse me, a planning commission that took, received information outside of the public hearing, took a public position on it, and then voted in accordance with that public position, even though it wasn't based upon things that were received in the public hearing. And the court set aside the decision of the Planning Commission. It's purely a due process issue.
Keeping this in mind, in what we're doing here, then, our planning department, and even our city manager, and on these developers that come in, and we have a project, then they should get a copy of this, that literally tells them, once it's on, gone through and ready for council, don't contact us anymore.
Yeah, well, and if you, if you read what the language.
I mean, don't put us in a situation that, like that.
Yeah, and that's what, you can see, however, that the language of 5A is minimize contact, not contact is prohibited. There are actually, there are some cities that absolutely prohibit contact, that they want to tell a developer, no, you may not deal with this except at the public hearing or through staff, when staff provides a staff report. That isn't the way it is in Norco, and probably doesn't need to be. But the contact should be minimized. And if it's going out and looking at a piece of property or a building, that's a lot different circumstance than meeting with a developer at City Hall who tries to sell you on everything he wants to do.
Now, you just, just for clarification, and not only for ourselves, but for future councils, and these developers know that, and when they come in with Steve, and they started doing that, so that we don't put ourselves in a situation where anybody sitting up in his dais says, oh, by the way, I can't, and.
Yeah, well, and again, if you move down to 5C, it's that once you have those, if you have those contacts, and there's nothing necessarily nefarious about it, you have those contacts. Property owners in the city, homeowners in the city want an opportunity to talk to individual council members. It's just that you need, for the purposes of transparency, and so that the, both sides of what an issue, see what input has been provided to the council members. And you do it by just disclosing, yes, I met with the homeowners on, in Saddles or Lane on Tuesday night, when they presented some information to me, although I'm going to make my decision based upon that information, which I received in the public hearing. It's just, it's a matter of transparency and disclosure.
Okay, so, but there's no court decision, or statutory?
Oh, no, quite the opposite. I mean, individual citizens, whether they're developers or whether they're homeowners, have a right to meet with their elected official.
Yeah, I just want to make the distinction between meetings before the project is submitted, and meetings after the project is submitted. I think Ted, your concern, as far as staff is concerned, is that we typically, I as a city manager, frequently request that a couple of city council members work with staff as a project is in conceptual stages, okay, to explore. But this is different from after a project has actually gone through the Planning Commission and before the city council. So my understanding is those meetings that happen before a project is submitted is okay, and those don't have to be disclosed, is that correct, John?
Yeah.
Okay, so that is really, most times where staff engages city council.
Yeah, and again, it's, once it's, after it gets to the public hearing process, and looking at B, kind of the second sentence, is the council member explains to whichever party it might be, they're unable to express a new viewpoint until it's, until the public hearing, and that's what they're going to rely on the public hearing, and encourage whichever developer, homeowner, whatever the issue is, to submit testimony and information in writing, so it's a part of the record. Ultimately, again, I'm not, although this has happened before, but I'm not suggesting it happens very often, a city gets sued, this city gets sued by somebody who proposes a project, or the other side saying that there isn't substantial evidence in the record to support your decision. And there has to be, your decision has to be made based upon what's in the record, not what you know outside the record because of what a developer said to you or tried to convince you.
Okay, moving on to the next item, which would be Page 11 of the resolution, addresses, we've added the authority of the presiding officer. And so the presiding officer essentially would be maintaining order, making sure that comments stay with the topic at hand, so as to not violate the Brown Act, and making sure that motions are used appropriately with the assistance of the city attorney and the city clerk. So that's basically what that covers. The Presiding Officer section, which I believe is Page, the next page, Page 12, currently, it's what's on the left there, the text, again, we just expanded on that language to just get a little bit more detail on the duties of the presiding officer in maintaining order of a meeting. Yeah, I got.
Any person.
Yeah, it says any, any person, yes. Thank you, Councilmember Newton.
You put a little dig in for you, did you? All right.
Then the next three slides are complete additions to the resolution, and this just lays out the responsibility of staff members, including, the first one is the city manager. I shall attend every meeting and participate in the discussion with the city council. If the city manager's not able to attend, the deputy city manager takes his or her place. Also, with the city attorney, added some language about the roles and responsibilities, adding, acting as an advisory parliamentarian for meetings. And also, the city clerk must attend, otherwise the deputy city clerk should be in attendance to keep the record of the meeting in accordance with the Brown Act. And moving on to Rules to Quorum and Order, which I believe begins on, let's see, I believe it's Page 13 or 14, and we've added some language, again, to personal privilege, which is Item F, and mostly to just give some guidance on how a council member should approach this, should it become an issue, basically calling for a point of personal privilege to maybe talk out any offense or perceived offense on character. And again, there is some, regards to conflicts of interest, there is some language under Rules to Quorum and Order that address this. But under voting procedure, which is essentially an item or a section that we've added quite a bit of language there, this just gets into a little bit more detail in regards to conflict of interest. And that, basically, a council member can abstain unless there's a financial conflict of interest, and it's a recusal, and the council member must physically leave council chambers, and at that point, they are considered absent from the meeting for that particular item. Again, continuing on with voting procedure, this is all new text, and it just goes into detail about abstentions. It's a council member's duty to vote, but there are instances in which a council member may abstain. So again, participation is encouraged, but they can abstain, and at that point, they're considered present in the meeting. I think those are the highlights of that section there. And that's, those are basically the significant portions that have been changed, revised, added. If you have any questions, I can answer them, or the city attorney can chime in as well.
Okay, so we'll start with Councilman Hannah. Do you have any questions on the presentation?
No, thank you.
Councilman Hoffman, do you have any other questions on the presentation?
No, I think you clarified it all, thank you.
Councilman Bash? Councilman Newton?
I'll disclose that I reviewed this with the clerk earlier. No questions, thank you.
It's okay, it's not a problem.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, Cheryl, I just had one question on Page 6, under Public Hearings. The very last sentence talks about only evidence provided during the public hearing will be considered, and I wanted to ask you, does this include emails, and how do we go about, do we just forward those to you, and then they'll be considered into the public record? I know there were some questions about that before, so does this address that?
Yeah, I mean, the answer is that anything that gets to the council gets considered as a part of the record. If you receive an email that's on the subject, and you pass it on to the city clerk and share it with the rest of the council, then yes. If you don't, obviously, then it doesn't get into the record. I would encourage you, if you receive, before a public hearing, emails or other communications for, on the subject, that they be immediately provided to the city clerk and then distributed to the council.
Okay.
One question on that. In our minutes, there, from the last meeting, there was an email that was received that was time stamped at past 7:00 PM, when the meeting already had started. And where do we cut these off so, for proper distribution, if you're going to include an email in the hearing record?
Yeah, I mean, there's no real hard and fast answer. Generally speaking, you don't receive documents that are presented after the meeting's begun, but in real life, that isn't what happens. If you receive a date-stamped email that, like I was just saying, it's being the city clerk's call, but if you provide it, copies to all the council members and indicate that, I mean, if it's not lengthy, either read it, or at least indicate that it's before the council and opposes the project or supports the project, and that'll be included in the record. I mean, if you want to not accept, emails is kind of a weird one, but if you want.
No, I don't, not saying not accept them, but have a cutoff time for when they make a comment on something. I mean, once we start the meeting, it's very difficult if somebody's going to, I mean, the timestamp for the last one we received was after 7:00 PM.
Yeah, again, I think we probably almost have to take it on a case-by-case basis, because, for example, in a public hearing, all the information that you're supposed to receive is received after the opening of the public hearing. So the fact that the meeting began at 7:00 is kind of irrelevant.
It's the time that you actually do the public, okay.
So that if somebody comes in with an email and hands, just like the other things that they hand, they get handed out.
Okay.
It ends up, at that point, going to whether or not it's so late that it's going to have any impact. Back in the, not old, I guess not that old days, the sequel litigation particularly, it was pretty common for somebody to come in with, you know, 20 pages of comments on the EIR that you were about ready to certify and say, here they are. And the courts have held, you know, if it's so late that you can't legitimately consider it, that's the problem of the person presenting it.
Okay, are there any other questions for staff? Any other comments? All accepted.
To adopt Resolution 2019-05.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 2019-05, amending the rules of procedure for city council meetings. Please vote on this item. Motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. We will proceed to Agenda Item Number 7, City Council, City Manager and Staff Communications. So we'll start with Mr. King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything, sorry.
Chad, do you have anything? Cheryl? Councilman Newton? Councilman Bash? Mr. Harper?
Nope.
Mr. O'Carroll? Councilman Hoffman?
Yeah, I want to think, I want to think.
Yeah, I want to thank, I want to thank, come on, I was going to thank Chad for the Crestview project. That was very good, front flag control. Thank you for putting it together, thank you.
Councilman Hannah?
No, ma'am.
Lieutenant? Chief? Thanks for joining us this evening. Glad to have you back.
You're welcome back.
Welcome back, sir. Short meeting, just for you. Gina? Brian?
Just to note that the, we had a presentation last night, for those who couldn't attend, from the California Department of Agriculture, related to the Newcastle situation, and they will be doing a short presentation again for us on the, at our next one.
All right. And I would just like to follow up with that. Thank you to the residents of Norco for the attendance. It was a very well-attended meeting, and so I definitely appreciate that. With that, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to adjourn this meeting of the Norco City Council at 8:31.